We will call this meeting in order. It is 6:01, Franchel. If you can leave us in the invocation place, please.
Thank you for bringing us all together at the night of the council meeting. Give our council the knowledge and the ability to be able to make the decisions that they need to make. Thank you for allowing our citizens to participate and bringing us all together in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Eight-three citizen comments. Mr. Nutt, you can start.
Good evening. My name is David Nutt, fighter Texas, 77662. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would also like to note that the gracious allotment of four minutes for citizens to use our First Amendment rights to speak and to raise legitimate concerns is considered by our mayor to be throwing a fit. My wife, daughter, and myself have spoken at previous council meetings in relation to the city signing a contract with Flock Safety. I was unaware that taking the allotted four minutes to raise a concern was throwing a fit. But now we know how our city's highest elected official feels about citizens simply voicing their opinions. I feel that is very unprofessional. Saying that, I will add that my family will still work with you and support your mayor, Main Street Cleanup Day, as we have done in the past, and we're going to give to your meal packages that you've been given out, we're going to still support. I just have a different opinion on this one issue, and I'm not throwing a fit. The elected officials, departments, and citizens should work together to advance and improve our city. So when is enough enough? With our police department being a member of Real-Time Crime Center, they have access to 3,405 cameras in southeast Texas with their words on their website, direct access. We need nine more, apparently, to be safe, except all cameras are not created equal. The 3,405 that are integrated with RTCC are businesses and residents, and their cameras are not all linked together to create a database on each person and vehicle. The nine cameras the city will be getting with the grant, or apparently have already purchased, are different. They will track each car, and that then creates profiles of each one that is stored on Flock Safety servers. The mayor says this is the future. I disagree. It does not have to be our future if we don't allow it to be. We do not have to agree to be surveilled with our every movement and let those movements be stored with the company that then sells that data. How did we go from an agenda item that passed two regular council meetings to allow the police chief to sign a contract with Flock that agenda item was tabled, to now moving money from one account to another to cover cameras that have already been purchased? Mayor says on one Facebook post that we need to install these cameras soon, or we will have to reimburse the grant, a grant that stated purpose is to prevent the theft of catalytic converters, which has never been mentioned in the last several meetings that we've been talking about it, and which has happened zero times in 2025. Reimburse the grant. We don't want the cameras. Thank you.
Ms. Isabella Nutt?
My name is Isabella Nutt. I live on T- fighter Texas. I came here tonight not because I particularly enjoy public speaking, but because I care deeply about the kind of community we're building, a community that values freedom, trust, and privacy. The proposal to install Flock Safety cameras threatens all three. Every driver, every family, every visitor will be recorded and stored in a system that can be searched, shared, and sold, often without our knowledge or consent. Once that happens, there's no taking it back. History shows us something very important. Once the government gains a new power to watch its people, it rarely gives that power up. Take a look at New York City. They just elected a communist mayor where we were supposed to be a nation under one God. Now we are having public mosque in Times Square. Cities across the country have learned this lesson the hard way: lawsuits, data leaks, and abuse of power, all because trusted technology that promised safety, but they only delivered control. Flock Safety claims that this is about protecting us, but real safety doesn't come from constant monitoring. Real safety comes from strong communities, good policing, and mutual respect between citizens and their government. When you track innocent people just in case, you no longer are protecting them. We should not have to trade our privacy to feel safe. I may be young, but I know this: freedom is not something we inherit or forget. It's something we defend every single day. So tonight, I'm asking our city leaders to stand on the right side of history, vote no on this contract, choose the people over the cameras, choose trust over tracking, and to everyone listening, the fight does not end tonight. We will never stop standing up for our right to live freely, privately, and without a fear of being watched, because once we lose our privacy, we lose a piece of what makes us free, and that is something I will never surrender. Thank you so much.
B, Council considers it. Approval of the council's fate, approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve the call of the September 18th minutes. Those have to be postponed to the next meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Barker, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Council record agenda. C1, consideration of possible actions to approve cancellation of a regularly scheduled council meeting on November 27th due to the Thanksgiving holiday. Motion by Councilmember Barker, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C2, consideration of possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Biker, Texas authorizing the city's ballot to vote for the 2026-2029 Board of Directors for the Orange County Criminal District.
So we sent out a ballot to nominate our people to be Board of Directors for the appraisal district. So right now, we didn't have anyone added, and so on the ballot we have Karen Fisher, McQuaid, Lorette, and Bill Welch.
District there, you've got 122 votes that can be split between these three people. So you just need to decide where you want to put your votes. Last year, we put all our votes on this issue, just for reference. And Karen is retired from the county. So...
I'll try to do that again. I like the motion.
All of them are doing good. Motion by Councilmember McGowan.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't have to split these between two people, or...
You can split them between the three, or you can give... Last year, we gave them all Karen, the Fisher lady, who the fishy was previously.
Out of these three people, they will elect two members, and we have 122 out of the City of Biker, and they can be split between these three people any way we want to. Last year, we put all 122 towards Karen.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C3, consideration of possible approval of a resolution authorizing the engagement of Brooks, Watson &amp; Co., CPA's to complete an audit for the fiscal year 2024-2025 and approving and authorizing the mayor to sign an engagement letter.
Mayor, council, this is just our every-year letter that we get your signature and the city manager's signature on for the approval of Brooks &amp; Watsons to complete our audit. We're trying to start it sooner this year rather than later. So this is why this is on this meeting instead of next.
Motion by Councilmember McGowan, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C4, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution awarding a contract for HMGP DR-4572-0018 for the City Hall generator to Texan Municipal and Industrial LLC of Houston.
Good evening, council. Good to be in front of y'all again. We did take bids here at City Hall on Thursday, October the 23rd, at 2:00 p.m. for this project, and this is basically replacing the existing large generator here at City Hall. This was part of an HMGP DR-4572 grant that we applied for several years ago, and so thankfully, that funding did come through and allowed this project to move forward. We did have two bidders that day, Texan Municipal Industrial and McDonald Municipal Industrial. As you can see there, Texan Municipal and Industrial was the low bidder, and we're recommending award of the base bid, which is the generator itself, also the removal of the existing generators out there for to be stored there until y'all can take it to bid or dispose of it however y'all see fit, then also the replacement of the existing automatic transfer switch. And so with those two items, that was the base bid and additive alternate number one. Total recommended award is $206,172.00. Their contract time was 156 working days, and that would be our recommendation. We did check the references. They checked out. Everything appears to be in line for them doing the work for y'all. Lastly, I'd like to go ahead and add that our original budget for this grant was for construction $232,500. So obviously, y'all can see, we're under our budget, and one of the things that came up after we bid it was if we had money, maybe replacing that existing fence around those generators. And so with y'all's award, we start moving forward, we'll actually work with them to get us a price on replacing that existing fence and hopefully work that into this grant so it's all paid for.
Motion by Councilmember McGowan, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C5, discussion of possible action to approve a resolution amending the engineering services contract with Chandra Kim Hope for services performed under DR-20-065-220-C407.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This is for amending this contract down $3,750 due to Erie Street being still included on this and when Erie Street had already been done. So that's all we need to do.
Motion by Councilmember Barker, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C6, discussion of possible action to approve a resolution adopting a policy to provide oversight of certain grant procedures as required by the Texas General Land Office.
So this is, we had the monitoring of this grant, and there were some issues with us getting payrolls unkind from the contractor. Of course, we've already, it's already closed out, but because of this, they have this little policy that they wanted us to put in place.
What is that policy?
It is just that they'll require that certified payrolls be included as support documentation at the time of preparation of each draw request. So the city will periodically request and spot-check all certified payrolls during the construction phase to ensure the accurate and up-to-date record-keeping of the Labor Standards Officer.
Motion by Councilmember Barker, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C7, discussion of possible action to approve a resolution updating the city's financial policies to include a review of invoices for cost allowable.
Okay, the same monitoring visit showed that we need to make sure that we review invoices for cost allowable. Upon receipt of the invoice, the finance director shall confirm that all line items are allowed costs. We will also assist with that, of course, and the city will verify that all required supporting documentation is included with the invoice, including but not limited to documentation required and the terms of the federal award.
So what we'd like to do is go ahead and update the city's policy in general so we don't have to bring this forward every time there's a grant?
Right.
Motion by Councilmember Barker, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C8, consideration of possible action regarding the 2026 music amp for the Chamber of Hoppers. Ms. Natasha.
Hey, everyone. Just asked to come up and kind of give y'all an overview of what we did last year, how it went, since we had kind of that partnership switchover. And we basically had over 100% growth. We had, in the EDC, they had us at over 3,000, what they do, electronic devices is how they've started monitoring their heads and beds. And then we did pricing to $15 a person. That stayed with the Free Kids Zone. That was the way to keep the Free Kids Zone and progress forward. That went over very well. We brought Texas Stage in as a partner for the chamber, so now we signed an agreement with him basically to the proceeds switch are half 50/50. So with that, we came out with about $13,900 with the chamber to put back into the event next year. So where I think you guys had handed us over $8,000, if you double that $13,900, you can see kind of what we made in all profitability there. So we did $13,900, he got $13,900. With bringing Jimmy on instead of just a sponsor and a vendor, we saved an extreme amount of money, and that's why you see that number there, where he would charge 60 to 80. He puts in 32.5. The chamber agreed to put 32.5, and then we basically turn in all invoices and then split the profit after that. So that's how that we came to those numbers. We got very lucky in this year because of sponsorships were almost null and void. There were not very many, but we had a favorite called in with working with Jimmy to have Stoney LaRue there. So our 32.5 that we had pretty much went straight towards entertainment. We would not have had Stoney LaRue for that amount if we didn't have a favorite called in. So that is kind of the update of where we were. We had over 50 local vendors. Most of them have already committed to coming in again next year. We will probably reduce a little bit of food vendors. We had quite a bit. Most did good. There were one or two that were over towards the Kids Zone that, for reasons of their own made of not, did very well, and then, but most had a great turnout. So we were very, you know, happy with that, but we want to reduce it a little bit so that we can have just basically an aisle and not make that L shape. So I think that's one of the only adjustments we'll do. Do y'all have any questions for us? The only other thing I wanted to say, I guess, before I even open that up to questions, is there was a little bit of an undertone that happened that I wanted to address. We don't want it being said that this is a chamber event. Never want that said. There's kind of an undertone that the city gave this to the chamber. No matter how, which way that goes, I never want that to be. When I came before, most of y'all were here when I came, and we were asked to take front seat, backseat, and that's how we have always looked at it. When I go in front of the EDC, when I came in front of y'all for Hot Tax, I label this as a partnership with city and chamber, and I don't think that either organization would want to do it without that partnership from the people in City Hall that I've talked to and the chambers feeling in general. So I wanted that stated on record for everyone.
And I just want to clarify, next year's events, y'all are covering the police officers, not the same.
That is fine with us. You guys are covering everything else that y'all covered before, correct?
That's what the council needs to look into.
I think that can be something that we bring forward.
Yeah, I think that's all we're asking. Yeah, all we're... Yeah, all we're asking is the same support that we had last year. That's all we want. What I came up here and what we agreed to. I do think that Misty did show up, and we had, you know, Roden Bridge show up to most meetings. Percy is, we couldn't have done anything with that Percy. Everybody knows how amazing Percy is, so I don't have to get up here and say how amazing Percy is, but he was just a staple out there and everything. So that, I can't do without Percy. If y'all don't give me Percy, we bounce. Sorry, that partnership's over. But everything else that you guys did, yes, we asked for those things. We would like those things. If we have to take over police, that's fine. I think that's probably for better anyways with a little bit of communication better wise there, and I think we could do that, but I don't want to lose anything else that we asked for. I do ask that when I came up here, I asked for two people from council, and Misty and Percy were the only ones in those room. I know Chief was here when he was here, but when Chief left, there was no one else from the city in that room, which y'all didn't have a visitor center. So I know we have a visitor center now, and that's what I expressed, please get one as quickly as possible.
Just let me know.
Yeah, I would like, I mean, I'm still going to come up, you know, in the future and make everyone aware of how it went, all that kind of good stuff, but I think if this is a partnership, having two people from council sitting in there and someone from visitor center and Percy from the city, that communication, that partnership is unified. I think some of that undertone might have been because some people weren't sitting in that room to know certain things. So, and I just, I don't ever want that undertone, ever.
And I think really the only action just needs to be council confirming that the chamber is primary seat, and we're helping, and the council can review all the rest of everything. There's any questions on the other details. So I think y'all have it all in her package.
And then a clarification, as it's not, we gave it to y'all for a year, just that this is a general partnership. This is what this is.
I think the problem was that was what was said last year, was we were giving it to you for a year because we had a lot going on, but I don't think...
I think that was the intent.
Yeah. I don't think that the staff can handle that at budget time anyway, so I think it's best that the chamber does it. Y'all did a great job with it. I think it worked great like that, so.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. Motion by Councilmember McGowan, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
What are the motions?
Is the chamber's event with the city taking second seat indefinitely.
We asked you, that is okay with music friendly status?
Yes, all of it. They will make sure anything that needs to be done will be done.
Why don't you just put it in?
So...
Is that the way that...
Music friendly works by, the music friendly is for you guys or the city of Biker supporting any musical in here. That event, supporting us if we have it, if Jimmy just had it. If y'all supported that, that is what music friendly is. And yeah, we would, if y'all know, we put besides just the banner, we put it up at Hometown Holidays, any event you have music at, even if it's a piano recital, having that banner there is what you need to do with anything, so.
Is that what the chamber requests, is that you guys put on the festival?
I request that this continue to be a partnership with chamber front seat and city backseat is how we've kind of, the easiest way to put that, that we are in partnership together. We do probably need to get in a room and say, hey, this is, you know, what we're willing to do, this is what we're willing to do, and, but that still needs to be a partnership and agreed upon between everyone, not it's a chamber event, it's a city event, because that's...
Can we make clear, is this one year, or is this indefinitely? Mayor's rule indefinitely, or is this just year by year?
I would think that as long as this goes on, I'm going to stand up here and ask for this to be a partnership. Yeah.
Do you want to ask for it every year, or are we going to...
No, I would like to give you a renewed, no. No, I don't want it to be an every-year thing, no.
I'm wanting to make sure it's indefinitely.
Yeah, I think as long as this thing goes on, we should have a partnership with, you know, people working together. I don't want it to be, and...
I think we should review it every year.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
I think it wouldn't target anything either, because the chamber might change it. Here's the only concern, by the time the event is over, Hot Tax has already been asked for for the next year. That's where that comes in as part of a concern.
Well, you're talking about money. We're just talking about our position with the partnership.
Sitting in the backseat.
The money, but they have to ask for the money as a chamber.
Well, correct.
Well, there's a little discrepancy there, and I think we all need, like, to get in a room and discuss that, because when last, in the last couple of years, I think the first year, there was no budget, and Pebbles could probably speak to this more, because no budget was made. We were going to have a picnic, then we did a jam. I know last year, we were handed the $10,000 budgeted, is what we were told, where that comes from. I don't know. I'm not at the city. And $8,000 from the other. How we do that, and then we came and asked for hot tax money. That was not like asking for the $10,000 that's already budgeted. We came in and asked hot tax money for a side of things. How you guys want to partnership, that's what I think every year needs to be discussed. Like, let's say one year that these bills get too high. Like, here we're saying, hey, y'all take over the police, and I get to say, hey, we can do that, we can't. That can be in a room together where we all talk about what resources we have and how we make this thing successful, not have to come up here every year and ask for the police force, or ask for sanitation, or ask for Percy.
Just help the committee and the committee helps make all those decisions.
Exactly, yeah.
And they want to start it like A to Z.
Yeah, we got to get this, we've already met as like the core thing to do sponsors. We've got to be able to book bands, you got to start this in January. So every time after September, October, and November, someone, whether it's me or whoever, comes up and says, here's how it went, so the people that aren't in that committee room know what goes on besides handing over, because even with a hot tax report, like, what I hand over to the EDC for a hot tax report shows that I may have made nothing, because they only want to see what you spent. They don't want to see what you profit or anything. What we hand to you guys may be a different report. So when you sit in a committee room and you're sitting there, you have a profit-loss to look over and where everything went to. I'm just making a overall kind of thing. Is that, any other questions? Did we finish the motion? Do we need a motion?
No. I just want to say for the record, I would appreciate the partnership that we all have had together, and I would like to continue that. It was definitely, y'all did an amazing job this year. It's definitely a good thing.
Thank you. I think we all built on it, and like I said, it wasn't chamber. That was the committee.
It's just going to keep growing and get even better.
That's the hope, so.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, council. C9, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance, the City of Biker, Texas authorizing the sale of beer wine for all premises suction pursuant to the authority of the Texas Alcohol and Beverage Code, Section 251-725 to commercially zoning property consisting of approximately .584 acres out of and part of John Davenport, Surveig, Act Number 67, more commonly known as 24 Dan North Main, Biker, Texas, 77662, Orange County, Texas, Oma Field Box LLC, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This is the official permit for field box that we've already annexed for the National Bureau of Public Safety. Motion by Councilmember McGowan, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C10, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the use of residence funds for the NBCPA grant payment. Funds will be reimbursed in the amount of $53,600. I do have two citizen comments. Do y'all want to speak before Alita explains this, or do you want to speak?
I love your chance.
Okay.
It's residual funds.
Yes, thank you. So we already approved an accepted grant that can change. So this is for the, you know, we have paper cameras in order to get our money back. Cameras were ordered when the grant was accepted and approved, and so now we need to pay for them. So it is an 80/20 split with 20% coming from the police department seizure fund and the rest coming from the grant itself.
We just want to take the residual funds to pay for it originally, and then when they reimburse us, we'll put it back in the residual fund. It's the same way we do with the buyout.
We just see it taken. Okay, Ms. La.
My name is Caitlin Webb. I reside at fighter Texas. Item C10 may sound procedural, but it carries more weight than that. It asks whether this council is prepared to proceed with a project that has never aligned with the stated purpose of the grant, which was to combat catalytic converter theft, a crime that has occurred only twice in 2024 and zero times in 2025. On May 13th, this council voted to apply for the SB 224 Catalytic Converter Theft Grant. The minutes reflect no discussion of catalytic converter theft prevention, no references to components that define that program, and no public explanation of how the funds would be used. The only phrase entered that night was, "We're going to upgrade our technology." In the initial application submitted in May, the city identified Flock Safety Cameras as the intended purchase. The proposal was never built around catalytic converter theft prevention or community education. It was about cameras. By September 25th, that intent became public. The project was represented as... The project was represented as fully funded by MVCPA and seizure funds at zero cost to taxpayers. Council was told the city would receive seven to eight cameras. Yet in the department's own presentation to the MVCPA in July, this project was already described as Vider PD Flock grant involving nine cameras. Both May and August applications filed lists nine fixed LPR cameras, and the August revision adds one trailer-mounted LPR, one mobile security trailer, and two solar long-range systems. The numbers were known, the documentation existed, the public was never told. MVCPA's July correspondence formally cited errors, omissions, and missing budget narratives. Notice that the first submission failed to meet standards. The state's score corroborates that concern. Vider received 13.5 of 24 points, with evaluators flagging weaknesses in documentation, realism, and purpose. The Statement of Grant Award confirms $55,833 in grant funds and an $11,167 cash match for a total of $67,000. Every dollar falls under supplies and direct operating expenses. No allocation or narrative for community education or outreach. MVCPA Goal Three requires each grantee to conduct community education activities, boost at local events, vehicle displays, or distribution of educational materials. Yet both of the city's applications report one advertisement, one media outreach, and zero educational events. The record shows no community interaction of any kind. Under MVCPA's own performance metrics, the absence of education constitutes non-performance under Goal Three, a basis for grant review. Two mandatory conditions in the Statement of Grant Award warrant particular attention. Non-supplanting, grant funds can't replace or prepay local costs. Two, reimbursement only, the state pays only after the approved eligible spending. This agenda item would press directly against the two non-negotiable MVCPA conditions. Provision standard to every grant where even a single misapplied dollar can trigger repayment or audit review. I will note a recent public remark portraying residents' concerns as throwing a fit, paired with the claim that this project was, or that this project was already approved, and a warning that the city may have to pay back the grant if action is not taken immediately. When repayment is invoked in that way, it reflects something other than public impatience. Public questions do not create compliance exposure. Under the grant's own standards, repayment becomes a risk only when the grantee has not met its obligations. If that risk now feels close enough to surface in public commentary, its origin would rest here at the base, not with the residents who purportedly threw a fit. Publicly available materials further show that Flock devices, much like the one in my hand, have documented vulnerabilities and have been the subject of litigation elsewhere. A grant framed as catalytic converter theft prevention now exposes the city to further legal and financial risk. If compliance feels inconvenient, consider the cost of non-compliance when the audit begins. Thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Good evening. My name's Michael Webb. I'm in Vider, Texas. Vider's been a part of the real-time crime center for almost a year now, but that isn't the impression that I got while looking at the city's own website for any official information. There's nothing telling us how to sign up, no information on where to go, no indication that Vider is actually doing anything with BPD's real-time crime center at all. Now, while Vider has made no effort to keep their citizens informed, the city of Beaumont makes every effort to let their city know what the real-time crime center is and how they can be a part of it. At the end of September, we were told that we need AI-powered cameras to strengthen our bonds with BPD and the other local agencies a part of this crime center. If we're strengthening our bonds, then why is the city not trying to get citizens involved? Now, while I don't agree with every government agency in existence having access to these local camera feeds, which is what you have to agree to when you sign a Flock contract, I do agree that my local police department needs to have a list of citizens with cameras who are willing to supply footage. Maybe we start there first. Maybe we let the people know what they can do to help, instead of using a grant that will ultimately need to be paid back due to the lack of adherence to the community education rules of the MVCPA. If this was actually about public safety, there would have been more of an effort to educate the public and grow the crime center's list of available citizen cameras. Instead, we have a representative openly shaming citizens who have stood before this council in opposition to something they feel very little thought was put into. Referring to their lawful right to express themselves in this forum as throwing a fit. A politician that slings mud towards anyone, especially those they were elected to represent, is not a person that should ever hold a position of power. Thank you.
Enam chief, do you want to say anything else on the grant itself?
I just think direction from the council on what to do is if we're going to approve using payments to make a payment or if I need to call the state and sue, where we are familiar with, we're going to be able to run it, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The total cost of the cameras was 64,320? Or what was the total cost of the cameras?
67,000.
67,000, okay. Okay, so if we use this grant to pay for the cost of those cameras, can, I mean, the difference is basically almost $11,000.
They pay that out of the federal forfeiture seizure fund, so the no-tax dollars were used for that.
Okay. All right, that was my other question. I make a motion.
Don't we make the chamber?
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C11, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution adopting and establishing the city's covered applications and prohibited technology policy.
Counsel, can you hear me?
Ms. Monchris?
Yes, Ms. Monchris. Under Senate Bill 1893, cities are required to adopt a policy regarding covered application and prohibited technologies. Basically, it's tick-tock. This policy that Chris has drafted, it's basically the state's pronged language. It follows the state's requirements.
Make a question.
I put motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. C12, discussion of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a maintenance agreement with the Department of Texas, Texas Department of Transportation, subject to finally go review. Mr. Percy, or Mr. David, what do y'all? So this is something that the state wanted us to pay for, and I requested a meeting with them first on the issues we had. David was in that meeting with me. And the state action, or was it rather interesting? That if we wanted them to do anything, we had to put it in writing. So David has made all these notes, and they've been typed up of all the things that were requesting they do. I also requested they put a crosswalk at Orange Street and Main for when Orange Street is finished. So it's a safety pedestrian crosswalk for people across there. But y'all have the list. My request, and if y'all have any questions, Percy can answer. My request is that I get approval to sign it pending they add this to the agreement before it is signed.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm going to actually ask my assistant, David, to come up since he's kind of got in.
David had been in the building when we were having a meeting, so I bet David.
Yeah.
But Percy, I'll need you for the next one.
Yes. So what we need to know?
Just gives kind of a, I guess, an overview of the things that we're requesting Texas to do.
Well, the non-controlled and controlled sections. To my understanding during that meeting is the controlled sections would be like Interstate 10. And that would be from easement to easement, that they take full responsibility for this. Cleaning the ditches, the culverts, the highway, the trash, the road surface, everything. The non-controlled areas are 1132, Highway 12, and 105, Main Street. So to my understanding, they were saying that they only cover road surface, curb to curb, drainage, mowing the grass, cleaning debris. All that would be our responsibility.
Unless we put it in writing.
Yeah.
So it was a rather interesting meeting to figure out. Basically, they do nothing. And if we wanted to do something, we have to put it right. Have to put it right, and have to put the agreement. And they said we only have to put it in writing one time. David spent two days going over everything. So we're putting everything in there. We may not get it all done, but as long as it's in writing, it is standing. But I think the main thing was the crossings at Maple Crest, or the boxes at Maple Crest under the freeway was a big deal. The crossing for the pedestrian walk, and then obviously the maintenance and the other things we need them to do. So this was a list of everything that they could come up with that we could add. So if I get an approval to sign it pending they accept this list.
I'm putting them on the maintenance agreement. There's no, is this one a month? Is this a month, every six months?
There's no, there's no set agreement.
There's no, yeah, there's no set schedule.
And there's no way to do that.
There's no way to do that.
But without this, they wouldn't do any of this.
Correct.
Right. Mayor? We actually have- Control section on there, how often? I mean, I haven't really-
So we found out they fired the street sweeping company they were contracting out to, and there was another room starting because from Orange all the way to through Harris County has not been swiped, which I pointed out there's been a dead year for like the last month. So they haven't done any maintenance correctly, basically. We can't put them on a schedule, we can't hold them to a schedule. But if we do not sign this agreement and put this up in writing, they don't have to do anything.
Make a motion that we disagree.
I put motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero pending they add in to them for this before we sign it. Okay. C13, review on Orange Street project to repairs from Woodland Street to Sergeant Street. For example?
I'm trying to please.
Yeah.
This would be Percy. So Percy brought up some complaints. I have walked in with Percy and lead. We walked in with a contractor, we had a meeting with a contractor. Chris Levinson's walked in with us. But we have some pictures. If y'all did not have the opportunity to walk it.
Yeah, these, these pictures, this was taken today. I walked, spent about 45 minutes out there on Orange Street between Woodland and Sergeant. And these cracks, like I said, it's, pictures don't do it justice. I mean, it's hard to see in the pictures. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the contractor out on this job. Went out and looked at it, and we spent several hours out there looking at it. This spot here is just a spot that's broke out around one of the saw cuts. In some of the, you can see it there. And then in some of the pictures, you can see, one of them will be coming up, there's a pencil stuck in the middle of one of the cracks. And it's actually a saw cut crack. But it is opened up extremely wider than it should. This one here, you could put a quarter in it. And most of these cracks started three days after the concrete was poured. They poured that one section on a Friday. I went out Monday afternoon and started walking it and found over 20 cracks in that roadway.
And every time goes out, they're official cracks.
Even with the saw cuts. And just like that, they had a professional come out, a guy that was their rep. He was going to come out and his fix to this problem was going to take a grinder and grind out the cracks and put a Texas dot approved sealer in it. And I told him on the spot, in front of everybody that was out there, that that would not be acceptable. And I would make, I would do everything in my powers to make sure that the city did not accept this in this. And this crack right here, this is a major one, right here.
Oh, that one's down.
That one right there is really bad. And you could probably put two quarters in that.
It's not the same contractor.
No.
No, this one's the second phase between Woodland and Orange Street. I mean, Sergeant.
This is not the first phase we're talking about. This is the second.
The first section has two sections that need to be redone. That contractor is going to cut it out, pour it back properly. What we're requesting is that this contractor do the same thing. We met with them here, and we did the field trip. And I told them, Percy's told them, that there's no way that that's going to be done. So Percy, three foot?
Yeah, at least three foot on each side of the saw crack, the saw cuts. That one that you just looked at, that was, I mean, that's two cracks that's actually coming into a saw cut, which is not good on that part. And, you know, me looking at it. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a concrete person. But what I have seen of it, this is not acceptable.
We're holding one contractor to that standard.
Right. And this is, this is another one that is, it's cracked out. You know, and it's, just the way you see the line is the way it's cracked, you know, into that, on that slab right there. And there's, if I'm not mistaken, the pictures that I took today, I didn't take a picture of ever crack that was out there. But the major ones, there's approximately 48 location spots on that road. And this is the entire road. This is not just one side. There's almost 30 cracks on one side.
So then Chris, Rachel, and I walked it. The other contractor who's doing the other half, one of their guys was out there. And he stated they have two sections that they have to redo. They were going to cut it out. And he stated which, that it was saw cut too late. Their guys didn't show up on time. And that's kind of the conclusion we've came to. But pretty much the whole entire road was not saw cut when it shouldn't have been. We can't take this road.
No.
Ms. Rachel, can you back up one, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to find your pencil one is why.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to wait here, so you must have one.
Now, this spot right here, this was, looked like when they was prepping the north side of the road, the paint marks on the south side. When they were prepping the north side of the road, they got into it, and there's three different places where the concrete's chipped out on that south side over there. That's what that's, that mark is. And you'll see another picture in there down the road somewhere.
Oh, and Cheryl Ray did walk the road with us as well. That way the trailer was fully informed. Chris Levinson walked in as well. So they were fully informed. Yeah. Okay, so we're not expecting-
Come on, Perry. No problem.
And so I really wasn't 100% prepared to get into all the details tonight, but just to let y'all know where we're at. It was actually on the 28th, two weeks ago, when Texas Materials had their specialized sub consultant or subcontractor come out, and we had a meeting out there. CPAG was on site. We've been waiting at least to give them a chance to bring a proposal back to us and the city and say, hey, this is what our plan is to address, so we can take that next step. We have not received that yet. We've been continually reaching out and checking on status. We did find out that they also reached out to a second specialized group called SK Concrete Services to get another recommendation proposal. And so we have not seen either one of those yet. But as soon as we get those in hand, our next step is then bring down, and us have an internal meeting and go through, so then we can prepare a proper response to go to that next step.
So Jeff, I'll be honest with you, I don't think it matters what's in their proposal. If it's to be filling the cracks, I think everybody seems to be on the same page If it's to be filling the cracks, I think everybody seems to be on the same page that that's not.
And I understand what you're saying, but as far as kind of proper protocol with us going to that next step, that, that's where we're at.
So how long are we supposed to wait on them to bring that proposal? Because we should have already had it per what they told us.
I, I expect it anytime. I mean, I, should we have it already? Yes. Do I have control over that? Unfortunately, no, but we're continually reaching out, trying to get that in hand.
And with, I guess, Cheryl? Sorry, I just have a little. But how, how long are we supposed to wait for this? They're, they're obviously going to want to finish this road. They're going to want to give us their money. The ten percent that we can hold is only, what, seventy K? Some, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we're still waiting on payrolls from them too, so they're not going to give anything until we get those.
And we have not submitted their latest pay requests. I mean, we're, we're not moving forward and keeping everything rolling. So I mean, we're not saying, oh yeah, we're still paying y'all, giving all your money. No, that's not where this is at.
Right, but we can't wait a month for them to get those proposals, because they told us the day we all walked it, that we would have their proposal pretty quickly after Percy walked up with the specialist and lead office.
Yeah.
That was just, what, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's pretty normal. You can't make your motion just a little bit. If they are asking for a second opinion.
They told us we would have it that same week, though.
It takes a little time if they ask for a second opinion, so.
It's so honestly, and I, and I don't want to disagree with you, please listen to what I'm saying. We're kind of starting to get up to that point to where, I don't think we're quite there yet, but I think we're, yes, let's go ahead and give them several more days on this, and I think we'll probably have something. And so that's.
Can you let them know that it was brought forward to counsel?
Oh, absolutely.
For the session?
Absolutely.
It is a serious issue.
Hundred percent.
And I think God was filling the cracks and not going to be a.
When you mentioned subcontracture a while ago, did Texas Materials actually perform that much, or did they?
They, they did. No, they, as far as all the road work, yes, they, they did every bit of it.
Now, they, so they poured twenty-four up here of concrete in some places, and some they, in some other places, they didn't form them out separately, so they did mix, and it just.
Uh, you know, don't, don't keep, hold me to this, y'all, just my opinion on what I've seen. I, I think what you mentioned earlier is exactly right. I think it has to do with, with the time that they came back and made their cuts. Because I mean, we can all agree, concrete is going to crack. That's the whole reason why we have saw cuts. We want to tell it, crack right here, right? And so it's supposed to crack. But, but I think that's exactly what, what happened. And honestly, it's not that they waited several days here. That, that's not what happened. Some of these were poured, and then the very next morning, they came back and started making their cuts. Now, should they have maybe come back in four to six hours? Looking back, yes. Now, is that industry standard? We usually don't need to saw it that fast. That usually doesn't happen. Coming back the next morning, we've done many roads, and that's kind of industry standard on, on what happens. But yes, that's, I think that's really the culprit here.
Was there any requirements for them to obtain a performance bond?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, performance and payment bonds.
Where it need be?
Absolutely. Uh, the total contract amount, I'd have to get that, that contract. I really don't remember what the dollars were on it. But it's, I mean, it's for the, the contract amount.
So my only concern on that, though, is how do we explain to the citizens that we accepted the road, and then we have the problem?
I'm not saying that we accepted. I'm just asking, what are our backup plans if they do not?
What's that safety net?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I just want to see the full picture of what can we have or.
On the whole fact of the, on the grant side, it's just ten percent of the project. So maybe they can use it back.
Yeah, as far as holding retainage, you know, we hold ten percent back each, each pay request, and then that's released once the project is accepted at the end, et cetera. But yeah, but, but you're right, there is performance, payment bonds, all that good stuff.
Cheryl, do you?
I just got to let it play out, but hopefully they have it to us in a few days because, yeah, it's definitely probably time.
Yeah.
It's the first one, so I have theirs to do.
This, this picture right here really concerns me. If you look at the old concrete, what this is Sergeant and Orange Street intersection, how they've got that curved, and I don't know why they curved it the way they did, but I was standing there taking pictures of that intersection and other cracks that were there, and three vehicles pulled up, and all three of them run off on the edge of that curb, on the edge of that concrete right there. So why they moved it over?
As far as the radius.
They, it, I don't know, they didn't, they should have, it, me, it should have been moved over another foot or so and tied back into that, being right there at that corner, because that's a tight corner anyway due to the utility pole on the east side of the road.
Yeah, that's a crazy corner, so it's.
Can you go forward?
Something we can do on that part?
Yeah, and I'll have to check on that, exactly.
Kind of like we down the curb on the other end where they went back and.
Yes, ma'am.
Where we can.
And yes, and we'll, and we'll check on that. That, that's the first time I've seen that picture.
I've seen that.
This is another one here that, that concerns me, and I don't know why it was designed and moved over. Go one more, Ms. Rachel. Where that dot is, is where the original roadway was at. So that's approximately six inches over from where it was. And if you were to have stayed at eleven foot, which is where you can see it bend at the far back, how it turns, that should have been over another foot and a half over to the left.
Where is that at Percy?
That's Sergeant and Orange.
It's Sergeant, okay, that is it Sergeant, okay.
Yes, sir. That's actually on Orange Street right there that we're looking at on that side. And this right here, this was taken due to a lady that lives right there, and she was not happy the way they cleaned up the spot right there. And I, it took me about fifteen minutes to get away from that woman, because she was burning my ears up, and I told her I would do everything I could to make sure that was cleaned up.
I have always felt this is great, I mean, for my shit. You know, we can stay out of heritage, and they're all spreading them there.
Yeah.
Counsel, have any other questions? No. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
C-14. Consideration of urgent. Second by Councilmember McGowan, second by Councilmember Carter, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero, meeting adjourned at 6:57.